All right, Chair Fritz, whenever you're ready.
Right. This meeting is being conducted utilizing teleconferencing and electronic means consistent with State of California executive orders regarding the COVID-19 pandemic. Zoom is being utilized for this meeting. In case of technical issues, meetings will be uploaded to the city website as soon as possible after this meeting. We will be conducting today's meeting in a virtual setting using Zoom. Planning commissioners and staff are participating from remote locations practicing appropriate social distancing. Members of the public may view and listen to the meetings by use of Zoom as noted on the city's website and as noted on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to speak to the planning commission may do so during public comment or may comment on agenda items during the discussion of each item and must be logged into Zoom. Anyone using abusive, vulgar, offensive, threatening, or harassing language, personal attacks of any kind, or offensive terms that target specific individuals or groups will be muted and removed from the meeting. Please do not abuse this new way to provide public comment. And with that, we will start the planning commission meeting of May 11th, 2021. We have a roll call, please.
Okay, Chair Fritz?
Yep.
Vice Chair Ottinger?
Here.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Here.
And Commissioner Kelly?
Here.
Thank you very much. We do have a quorum, although we don't have any action items tonight. And noted that Commissioner Douche and Commissioner Lenderbush are fused.
Okay, our next item of business is the minutes from April 27th. Anyone have any comments or corrections? Seeing none, would anyone like to make a motion?
Motion for approval?
I'll second that.
Okay, last chance for comments. Seeing none, we vote on the minutes, please.
All right, I will do a roll vote. Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Aye.
Vice Chair Ottinger?
Aye.
And Chair Fritz?
Aye.
The motion passes 4-0.
Thank you. So the next item is for members of the public that would wish to comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda. If anyone would like to make a comment, please raise your physical or virtual hand.
Okay, I do not see any, and we did not receive any written comments either for this commission.
Okay, thank you. I'm assuming we have no conflicts of interest since we only have a presentation tonight, so why don't we move on to our presentation?
Okay, and I will start off first. I want to give a warm welcome to Ally Gaylord. She's the Director of Housing Development for the North Bay for Mid Penn Housing. And one of the topics she'll be talking about tonight is they were the developer for a teacher housing project in the San Francisco Sunset District, but they have a very wide portfolio, and I actually have a good college friend who worked with them for many years. They are a great group, and welcome, Ally.
Thank you very much. Hopefully, everyone can hear me all right. Good? Okay, thanks. I will go ahead and share my screen. Everyone seeing the presentation?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. No technical difficulties so far. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Ally Gaylord, as Carrie said, the Director of Housing Development for Mid Penn's North Bay office. Thank you very much to the Commission and Carrie for inviting me to give the presentation tonight. And May is Affordable Housing Month, so this is particularly fitting, so thank you. Tonight, I will be giving, focusing on affordable educator housing. But first, I'd like to provide a little background about Mid Penn and what we do. And then I'll go into Mid Penn's current partnership with San Francisco and San Francisco Unified School District on the Shirley Chisholm Village Educator Housing, which has yet to be built. And then we'll cover some of the overall economics of deal structuring for a project like this. Mid Penn Housing is a 50-year-old non-profit housing provider, property manager, and resident services provider. We're long-term owners and operators of our housing, and we serve particularly low-income residents, seniors, and people with special needs. So this educator housing is a little bit newer to us. It's kind of an innovative project in San Francisco as well. Mid Penn has developed over 100 properties and owns and manages more than 8,500 units in the Bay Area. We serve Northern California from Monterey up to Sonoma and Napa and even in between. Mid Penn is unique among nonprofits in that we do have our own property management and resident services companies within the one umbrella. We believe that providing a professionally managed building and services onsite is the best way to deeply connect with our residents and focus on their goals. We provide onsite services at all of our properties, either in partnership with other agencies or with our own resident services staff. Examples of our services include our award-winning academically-based after-school program and health and wellness programs as well. So moving into educator housing in San Francisco. So around the educator housing, there was this idea that housing, you know, was needed to be provided for educators for a long time and discussed among the city's housing agency and the district for probably over a decade now. The San Francisco Unified School District has cited the high cost of housing as a factor in the inability to retain and attract qualified teachers. Constant churn and long-term substitute teachers are a destabilizing force and have negative impacts on the community. The city itself supports a lot of affordable housing for households that make extremely low and very low incomes. And serving educators in the educator kind of housing income bracket was a new opportunity for the city that they saw that they could use their funding and their housing development finance infrastructure to sponsor a development that would serve both low-income and moderate-income levels as well. The, kind of through this presentation, the three lines you'll see is collaboration. This complex type of housing and kind of new innovative type of property can't be done, in my opinion, without a lot of collaboration. In 2019, an educator working group was formed, including members of San Francisco Unified School District, UESF, which is the Teachers Union in San Francisco, with support from the Mayor's Office of Housing, which is the Housing Department in San Francisco, and with also support from the National American Federation of Teachers. The working group met to discuss several types of strategies to attract and retain and support educators, including counseling, down payment assistance, and rental assistance, and brick-and-mortar approaches. The brick-and-mortar included review of different financial feasibilities on how to construct, own, and operate, and kind of whether they wanted to own themselves or bring in a developer to do this type of work. But examining this multi-strategy approach was really a way for the district to understand what could be implemented and along different timelines. You know, whether rental assistance could be implemented potentially quite immediately. Same thing with some housing counseling versus the longer-term brick-and-mortar approaches. The passage of the Teacher Housing Act in 2016 allowed the providing educator housing to be on district-owned land to be considered a state program, which then allows the low-income housing tax credit to be used in furtherance of that state program. So that was really a huge law change in 2016. The educator working group examined school district-owned sites that were either vacant or underutilized all across the city. Several were examined but had, and kind of approved for housing. However, there were some issues with certain sites, like steep slopes or, you know, just kind of existing conditions that made development more difficult. So the site that was chosen is in the Sunset District where the Francis Scott Key Annex Building is located right now. It's a seismically unsafe school, former school building that hasn't been used because it's not safe for kids to be in it. It's been used for storage and administrative functions. But it was on a 60,000-square-foot lot that was mostly a parking lot and actually had been temporarily repurposed as Playland, which is kind of a community pop-up park in the Sunset District that made use of this kind of vacant, underutilized site in a temporary way. So the neighborhood context of the site is, or I guess the site context is shown a little bit more in this aerial. The site is between 42nd and 43rd Avenue, so it takes up blocks, almost a block, and is about three blocks away, six blocks away from Ocean Beach and a couple of blocks away from Golden Gate Park. It's very near to the light rail, so a lot of transit access, even though it's on the west side of the city. So kind of a more suburban context for San Francisco, actually. SFUSD collaborated with the Mayor's Office of Housing to issue an RFP for developing educator housing on this site. Mid Penn was selected in 2018. And further a little bit on the neighborhood context, I was mentioning, it's kind of, it's kind of almost a suburban feel to this neighborhood. A lot of single-to-maybe-four-family homes, you know, two-story, maybe three-story with a garage at the base level. So a lot, a lot smaller than what you may see otherwise. A lot of kind of mid-century as well. So we were really careful and wanted to make sure that we really brought the community in to our overall development process. This is kind of a graphic of Mid Penn's typical process, which takes about five to seven years from concept to kind of keys for our development and can be even longer if the deal is very complex or as part of a master plan, or if there are other extenuating circumstances. So this graphic kind of provides an overview of the development process for our approach, where you can see we work on several aspects of the process in parallel, with a lot of points of community input during our design process and during our land use approvals. So, and I think specifically with this project, it was very important because there not only is going to be the development of housing, but there is this existing temporary use of the Playland in the neighborhood that's very well-loved and invested by the community. So we had three neighborhood meetings to listen to neighbor concerns. Some of the biggest that we heard were building height, traffic, and parking. But we were able to work with the community in an iterative process to change the building massing. We added a couple of parking spaces and a car-share spot to mitigate some of the traffic concerns. And we got to something that we think everybody feels really, really good about. Another aspect of this was the, you know, working with educators and what, you know, what they might feel about living in a building with many other educators. So we also reached out to educators to do specific focus groups on what was important in their living environment. We found out laundry and places to work. You know, educators work at home a lot. They didn't want to always be stuck in their apartment. So finding a place where they can collaborate or maybe have a, you know, whiteboard or a conference room was really important for them, as well as laundry. And we also continued to meet with the working group, and which we continue to do today, to form policies regarding income targeting. We ran our building design by them, talked about how large the unit should be, what division of kind of studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom would fit the best. So just a lot of stakeholder engagement. And this is a rendering of our 43rd Avenue facade. We received our land use approvals in May of 2020 through the SB 35 ministerial process. You can see kind of from this elevation, and I've got a better shot of it anything in the next slide, that there's a community kind of play area that's accessible. It's on our property, but it's going to be open and publicly accessible to the community, which kind of helps reckon to that interaction with the current Playland and the pop-up kind of atmosphere. So we were able to really bring that in and give that to the community. And you can also see the kind of wood-looking facade. That is a publicly accessible community space that will have some office for a local nonprofit called Sunset Youth Services. But they'll also be able to open up that space, because we heard from the community, they really have a lack of indoor community space where they could do something like a birthday party or baby shower. And that was really a need in the community, so we're able to also give that to them. And it ties nicely with the outdoor community space as well, community accessible space. Here's a little closer view of the publicly accessible outdoor space, a rendering of what our landscape architect is calling pocky sticks or pokey sticks. I'm not sure how you pronounce that. So today, we're at Shirley Chisholm Village, which is 135 homes for SFUSD educators, which will be affordable to folks making incomes of between 30% and 100% of the area median income. And like I mentioned before, we were able to incorporate a lot of public benefits, including this lush outdoor space and community accessible indoor space. So here is the fun part, where we get to talk about the financing and economics of these deals. Hold on, my computer's crashing, so I'll just wait for the spinning wheels of dust. There we go. So affordable housing is typically defined as housing affordable to those making 80% or less of the median income of where they live. So I'm kind of flipping over to Sonoma now so that you can see some more relevant numbers. The area median income is defined on a county-by-county basis. And I just put the RENA note in here because I know a lot of folks are particularly keyed in on RENA with the next cycle coming up. So RENA is very low, is below 50% AMI. Low income is between 50 and 80, and then moderate is 80 to 120% AMI. And this is, don't worry if you don't see all these numbers, but this is just a comparison of kind of the basics of affordable versus market rate finance. On the left, you can see a market rate development where if we have the same unit count on market rate and affordable, the same kind of square footage, the same, you know, kind of the same project, right? Typically, the expenses for affordable housing are greater, the operating expenses are greater than what the operating expenses of market rate property are because we have the onsite professional management, we have the resident services, things of that nature. However, we are restricted by law in the restrictive covenants that we enter into about how much we can charge for our rent. So we are limiting ourselves about how much actual hard debt that we can support. So in this example, you can see that we're, that the affordable project is not able to finance about 18, almost $19 million, whereas the rents that the market rate development can charge cover their full costs, which is, you know, when you hear somebody say their deal is penciling. So the market rate will cover all their costs by the rents that they could charge, or they wouldn't build that building. But affordable, because we're restricted in the rent that we can charge, it's never going to pencil without some other source of funds. So that's where we look to the local subsidy or other subsidies. So the affordable housing capital stack, here's a kind of simplified version. Our biggest source of public funds is the tax credit, the low-income housing tax credit. The low-income housing tax credit allows targeting income affordability up to 80% of area median income. But there's a federal law that each project, on average, can only serve up to 60% area median income, if it's a, if it's one type of project, or 50% of area median income if it's another type of project. So that's all to say, you know, you couldn't have a tax credit project that's all targeted to 80% of area median income. It's got to be a mixture, an average out at no more than 60. So that's about a little over half of our funding for affordable housing projects. The other big portion is about 30% state and local funding, which could be any number of sources, land, money, you know, bond funds, sales tax measures. And the other kind of, a very small piece, like 10 to 11%, is the conventional permanent loan that could be paid from what the rents could actually support. So what we see is that often what we call paraeducators, which are classified staff, can qualify for the low-income housing because of their hourly rate, or they may not work a full-time schedule. So that's great for educators. We, you know, we need that housing for folks like teacher aides, library assistants, special needs assistants. So that's great, and that's definitely a group that we want to target in our income targeting. Teachers end up being a little bit more difficult because of the salaries there, where, you know, an average teacher's salary could be 70% of area median income, which then quickly can kind of move to the 80% or over income, and they can't qualify for that typical affordable housing rent. And, you know, then we can see the kind of missing middle, where they don't make little enough to qualify for affordable housing. On the other hand, they don't make enough to really qualify at what the market is going for. So it's this interesting, you know, difficult situation of how do we, how do we provide housing for all of our educators? And what I was thinking about before, the low-income housing tax credit is about 55% of our capital stack. So if we have a project that's 100, or sorry, 500,000 a unit, we lose 275,000 of subsidies if we are trying to target that over 80% of area median income. And how are we going to make that up? Because we're still not charging market, right? We're still needing a subsidy, but we don't have that tax credit source. So what we need is a flexible source of funds to make up that amount we've lost by not using tax credit equity. And we still need the other local subsidy as well. So like I mentioned before, land is huge, and particularly in educator housing. School district-owned sites are where, you know, where you're going to be getting the educator housing built. The district can own it and do what we're doing in San Francisco is a below-market ground lease for a dollar a year for 75 years with extensions optional. That, in San Francisco, saved the project about $20 million in costs that were not incurred for going out and purchasing the land. Additionally, property tax exemption for school districts, which was passed under AB 1157, property used exclusively for public schools, including the provision of housing for their employees, do get a property tax exemption. So that helps then lower the cost of operating and then makes up some of that, you know, delta in what we can charge on rent. Additional local sources include kind of your typical housing sources of funds, like in lieu fees, the development impact fees, bond and sales tax measures. I already said land and federal and state resources that are managed locally. You know, I think housing authority vouchers, I know Sebastopol doesn't have a housing authority, but that's also kind of, can be kind of difficult because that is serving kind of very low-income folks. And in structuring an educator housing project, you have to be thinking about, are even paraeducators going to go over that kind of, that very low income limit? And so you don't want to be serving such low incomes that you're not actually targeting the educator. So you really have to be looking at what the salaries are or what they, you know, what the estimates are, what the people actually make, so that you can appropriately target your income brackets. So the flexible public subsidy that we are really relying on is Mayor's Office of Housing City Subsidy in this property. San Francisco has passed a number of housing bonds, and some of their housing bond money is specifically targeted to moderate-income households. So San Francisco had a source of funds already envisioned when the RFP for this property went out. And so there was some, already some defined public subsidy that was going to be able to serve this middle-income bracket in San Francisco. And I show you our kind of really complex rent bracket and income targeting bracket. And I didn't put the rinse on there because then it gets to be many, many squares. But you can see in our 135 units, we are serving a vast range of income levels between 30% to 100% of area median income in studio one, two, and three-bedroom apartments. And I have our resident manager apartment as well. So I think we've done a really great job of being able to kind of hit a lot of different income levels and unit types on this property. And so I think the, you know, kind of the summing up of some of this is that the vision of the San Francisco Mayor's Office of Housing, targeting some funding to moderate income, so that they could kind of plug that missing middle hole that subsidy doesn't typically touch, was great foresight and great foresight of the voters to be able to target that capital. Also essential is the value of the long-term ground lease of the district-owned land. That is really essential for, you know, it's a cost that the property doesn't have to pay, so it's a cost that we don't have to go out and find funding for. And the collaboration between all of the stakeholders and entities that I was talking about, trying to envision this, the policies, and really knowing that housing is important for their employees is paramount, as well as still relying on some of our kind of proven typical housing finance tools. You know, a lot of the paraeducators are lower-income, so we can serve them in a property that's also serving moderate-income teachers. So I think I'll leave it there, and I think take any questions if there are any.
Great, thank you, Ally. Any members of the commission have any questions? Everett, go ahead.
Thank you for your time and being here. I really appreciate it. Very interesting. Do you see any of those programs, the ability to perhaps adapt to smaller communities such as Sebastopol or counties or other cities?
Yeah, I certainly do. I think the, you know, the existing housing programs, like the funding that I Yeah, I certainly do. I think the, you know, the existing housing programs, like the, um the funding that I was going through as far as development impact fees, um or um, you know, other fees that are collected by communities can certainly be directed to something like um affordable housing or moderate income housing. As well as, you know, Sonoma County had a bond measure a couple of years ago that didn't pass. But, you know, any of these local housing uh monies can be, um could be added to a moderate income project. We, I think the, the kind of catch there is there just is this additional amount of subsidy that has to kind of make up um the lost kind of rent, if you're talking about the moderate income um below-market rent.
And maybe I might have missed this, but um so if primarily for, you know, to targeting uh teachers for school districts and stuff, and if there's changeover, uh is there, like, how, how do people sign up or get considered, or if they leave the school district, uh what happens in those situations?
A lot of those policies are still um being kind of discussed and, and worked out um with the district. But the, the kind of intent is um that there would be a preference for the educators at least up. So we would um uh confirm that folks worked for the school district and um do income verifications and everything like that in order to get people um qualified and um offer them uh an apartment. And then as far as, you know, leaving the district, the intent wouldn't, would be that they would not stay if they were no longer an employee there. So I, you know, something about some kind of lease rider that, that somebody would have to continue to maintain um employment with the district to uh reside there.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any questions, Kathy or Linda? Linda, did you unmute yourself? You have a question?
I don't have a question. I just, uh this is the first time I've heard of this kind of directed housing and um I'm just wondering, well, maybe a little question. Um I'm a nurse and I don't know if I'd like to live with a bunch of other healthcare professionals because I believe in a lot of diversity. Um so that's just sort of a comment and wondering if um how you dealt with that.
I think that is uh something that people think about, um certainly. And that was one of the um questions that we had a lot of discussion with our focus groups, our educator focus groups on. And I, you know, I think that it comes down to that San Francisco Unified is quite a large school district. Uh we estimate there are about six thousand um folks who would be eligible just for this hundred and thirty-five units. So it's likely going to be a very diverse group and there are a lot of schools in San Francisco. So it's not likely that everyone is going to be living with somebody that they work with all the time, um though it certainly is. And that was something that people um did like because they could potentially carpool to work or um have other interactions that um were not um, you know, kind of school-based. But the important thing that we really heard was the ability to have this kind of uh public space in your community or in the, in the property, but also have your private space in your own apartment, right? So there's kind of this ability to, if you want to engage with folks, just like in any apartment. And, and that's kind of what we heard, right? If you live in any apartment building, you can choose to hang out with your neighbors on the patio, or if you're not comfortable with doing that, you would go in your apartment building. It's just how um, how much interaction folks really want to have with their neighbors. It didn't really, um, people weren't really nervous or were concerned at all about living with somebody that may have a similar profession.
Okay, that's great. Um one more question now that I'm thinking about it. It sounds like the requirements to work within the district rather than just targeted to teachers. I'm wondering, because teachers are at a crisis in terms of being able to fill positions. And of course, housing is a very, very major issue. So is it, do you cover all the employees? I mean, I'm, um again, I'm going to go back to being a nurse. We're at very, very high demand, especially with everyone trying to leave the, of nursing after this last year of COVID. And um just, I'm just wondering how, i- is it targeted because it's uh in high demand? Or is it because the school district has these needs?
Um it's targeted because the school district has the land. So the school district um is complying with um the AB eleven fifty-seven with um providing school district uh employee housing on school district land, as well as the um Teacher Housing Act. So it's really because of those programs that is being targeted to teachers. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, no, it sounds like it's not just employees of the school district. It's partly it's being targeted to teachers. So.
Right, teachers, teachers and classified staff, yep.
Well, it's, it's wonderful that you guys were able to put this together. I hope it progresses um well, so.
Thank you.
Kathy, do you have some questions?
Yes, um so I always like to ask, how could this apply to Sebastopol? Um we do have some school properties that aren't being used by the public school because charter schools have moved into them, or private schools have moved into them partly. And I'm wondering whether um our, if our school district was having an issue with finding teachers who could afford to live here, then is that something that you're, would the next step be for our school district to reach a business like yours and begin talking about what they could do with that property? Is that how that begins?
Yeah, absolutely. Yep. And I think that um those kind of conversations are certainly the, the beginning and trying to find the appropriate site. Um and, you know, the appropriate density and appropriate project um to put there and um really understanding the, the market and the community. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ally. I do have a few questions. So you mentioned the SB thirty-five process uh for your land use. Can you talk a little bit more about SB thirty-five and how that allows you to kind of streamline the approval process? Like what kind of things you had to comply with in order to use that?
Um yes, I can. I'm not sure that I can name all of the, I think it's seventeen characteristics that you have to comply with in order to be an SB thirty-five eligible site. But um yes, you have to be uh an SB thirty-five eligible site, which means you can't be on, I don't know, what land or historic site or um uh, no, no, I don't, I can't name them all off. But anyway, you have to, you have to be a specific site, right? And then you have to have a certain number of affordable units and come, and also comply with such things like having uh paying prevailing wages on the construction of your project, project, which is all um something we were able to do in order to use SB thirty-five and speed up our entitlement process. This was actually, we, we, at the outset of working on this project in twenty eighteen and, and twenty nineteen, we actually were not going to be eligible to use SB thirty-five because the property was zoned P public. And public uses actually in San Francisco don't allow housing. So one of the um requirements in order to be SB thirty-five eligible is that you're zoned for housing, or yeah, zoned for housing. So we were kind of not even looking at using SB thirty-five until Prop E was passed in San Francisco that actually allowed all P public zone sites, um except for parks, to allow affordable or educator housing. So that was great for us. It, it probably sped up our entitlement process by probably six months. It would have been lo, it would have sped up longer, except for we would already, had already kind of gone down the typical entitlement pathway. But it was really a benefit that we were able to switch over to SB thirty-five. We had to do a lot less um paperwork and with the planning department. And we were able to, uh I think we submitted in February our, our SB thirty-five application and got our approval in May. So it was much, much faster.
That's great. And I'm glad you, because that was my question about the zoning. You know, if, if it's a school, it probably isn't zoned for housing, but um so that was, you know, really interesting information, just being the planning commission and thinking about how this would apply here. You know, we might want to consider allowing housing on sort of school zone properties to make that process a little bit easier. So that's super helpful information. The other question. Oh, so I, I was a little confused about the, the tax credit. Were you able to use tax credits for a portion of this? Or was this, so for the, the units were the, with less than eighty percent, you could fund with the tax credits, but for the eighty to a hundred, you had to get, that was a gap, you had to cover that additional?
Yeah, the additional.
So the, so a, a tax credit project can be split like that. It doesn't have to be a hundred percent tax credit for all the units. You can have a, just cover a portion of the units.
Yes, you can cover a portion of the units. It, it, it really comes down to how, how are you going to fill that gap? And, and the gap is obviously quite large, so. It oftentimes doesn't work.
Does it have to be like, does it have to be sort of separate buildings? Like this is a tax credit building and this is the not tax credit? Or how does that kind of blending work? Or is it just a unit by unit basis kind of thing?
Um it's, uh you can do it both ways. Um you could either kind of have two buildings and kind of have two, you know, you could finance it as two separate buildings with two separate ownerships, where you have kind of a moderate building and then a tax credit building. Or um you could have it kind of all intermingled and some units just don't have the tax credit and kind of the regulations that go along with them. Um, yeah.
Do you know of other, other, other places in the Bay Area or Sonoma County in particular that have, have done this teacher housing example, you know, or, or developing teacher housing in this way?
There, yeah, there are a lot of folks that are looking at it. Um we're actually working with the Monterey Unified School District, um looking at some uh educator housing for that district. I would say a lot are looking at it. I think there's a project in Sunnyvale that's happening. But it's, it's, you know, I think it's kind of difficult to do, so it takes a long time. So the, the Educator or Teacher Housing Act didn't pass until twenty sixteen, so it's still relatively new. So it's certainly something that uh people are, are trying to make work. And just getting all the collaboration and um everything together is going to take a, a little while. But I predict you will see more educator housing developments for sure.
Great. Um and my last question was, so this kind of targeted housing, like this teacher housing, how does that, you know, work with, uh you know, fair housing laws and requirements to have a, you know, not target things like that?
Well, um you really have to do um a disparate impact study. So making sure that you're not um disparately impacting any group when you're targeting this kind of housing. So making sure basically that the uh future residents of the housing will reflect the kind of makeup of the community so that, you know, it's, it's um fair and equal uh for folks.
Okay. Great. Does anyone else have any questions before I open public comment? Okay, seeing them from the commission, I will open this up for uh public comment. If any member of the public would like to speak or make a comment or ask a question, please, please feel free. Raise your virtual or actual hand.
All right. I don't see anybody. You do have a question that came to me in the chat, Chair Fred's from the public. And so I'll start with that while we're waiting for other uh questions. So the, um the question is, I understand that seeking low income housing tax credit funds is very competitive, maybe three hundred percent over, over prescribed. How do you work around this issue on planning your project?
Well, it's a very informed citizen that is asking that question because it is um highly oversubscribed, the Low Income Housing Tax Credit. Um and there really isn't a way to plan around it. It is something that we have to go in and compete for um throughout the state. And um particularly kind of interesting and wonky, um California, the wa, the way that you access um a portion of the Low Income Housing Tax Credit is through tax exempt bonds. And taxes and bonds are allocated to each state based on per capita limits. And California uh in twenty nineteen uh hit its kind of annual limit. And now those bonds that didn't used to be competitive, and that's how you access the credit, now they are competitive. So we have no kind of over-the-counter tax credit um or, or way to finance our project. So everything now has to compete and in the Bay Area. So tax exempt bonds, I think, are oversubscribed about three to one statewide and in the Bay Area, seven to one. Um so it's very, very competitive and can delay projects for a very long time. We've already submitted um one application uh for our tax credits, which is kind of the last piece of funding that we need uh earlier this year. We'll be submitting another one in two weeks. And it's just kind of luck of the draw. Um so uh we can have projects kind of sitting and, and just waiting for that last piece of funding for a long time.
Right. And I don't see any other members of the public. Again, you can just unmute yourself if you'd like to. We'll see you unmute yourself. Um or use the chat or raise the hand. I'm happy for that. And if I made, Chair Fred, I have a question, member of the public. So I'm just curious how, how does, you know, how do, how would a city start the conversation with the school district or, or a nonprofit housing developer school district, you know? How do, how does that process get started? If you could talk a little bit about that?
Well, I think that, you know, kind of what I said before, understanding the market and understanding if there are um educators that are in need of this housing, I assume there would be. So I think that's a good place to start. And if the school district is, you know, having issues retaining and attracting um educators, that, then they would certainly probably be, be open to having some of those conversations of how can this um be alleviated and is, is providing housing a way that they would want to. And I think that um in particular, bringing a affordable housing developer into the conversation would be helpful because then you can start talking about some of the constraints and um identifying sites potentially. The city and um the school district could also potentially identify sites first and do some kind of, an RFP like uh San Francisco did. But um I think really just understanding the need is where uh the conversation would, would start and understanding what kind of resources might be available in the community.
Um and I do have another question from the public. Seems like the night to just, not, not want to speak out, but that's fine. It says, Ally, you mentioned, uh you had mentioned that in focus groups, access to laundry was important. Are there options to have washer dryers in the unit?
We actually didn't have washers and dryers in the unit. We have uh two laundry rooms on two of the floors. It's a five-story building. Um so we have two laundry rooms. And um it was, you know, i- it's more common for us to do the, the individualized laundry room. Or sorry, the, the common laundry room than it is for individual um laundry. And it just kind of gives the ability to have more um storage space and space in the unit as well as, um you know, we rent the equipment and maintain the equipment. And it's, it's just kind of more of our typical way of doing things.
Thanks. And I will note, I have seen in affordable housing applications, I have seen both a joint laundry room and closets with hookups, but not the actual unit, in the, in the unit. Um and to me, that seemed a little bit, you know, and for, and this wasn't for teacher housing, it was for more, um a lower income threshold. It seemed like the stuff in the units was maybe just being done for um some criteria, you know, tax credit criteria or something. It didn't really seem like that would actually be used in the. It didn't really seem like that would actually be used in the unit. Perhaps one or two might, might do that, but it didn't seem like it was necessarily necessary to have both versions of them.
Right, and yeah, if, if it's in the unit, people then typically have to buy their own. So that is tougher, you know, if you're moving into an apartment and trying to furnish it and all these things anyway, the last thing you want to do is buy a washer and dryer. So it, it just typically works a lot better to have the, the ones that we maintain and they're all high efficiency and, you know, low water use too.
You have any other public questions or comments?
I do not see any, Chair Fritz.
Okay, then I will close public comments. I have another question about, so in this, in your San Francisco project, so Mid Penn is, you know, a hundred percent owner of this project. The school district doesn't have any ownership, you know, piece of this. They're just leasing you the land to do this development. Yeah, okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Any final questions before we let Ally go? Well, great, thanks so much for being here, Ally. It was really informative and hopefully we can get some teacher housing with Mid Penn or some other housing with Mid Penn and Sebastopol at some, some point.
Thank you, love to.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, good night, everyone.
All right, next item on our business for this evening is subcommittee updates. Are there any updates? Looks like Kathy, do you have anything to report?
Yes, I have a few things.
Sure, go ahead.
I went to, with Carrie to, and Everett, to the Public Arts Committee and presented the mural design. And I guess the way to summarize is to say that at some point, they will form a subcommittee to which they've asked me to participate and I've agreed. And that subcommittee will consider what kind and nature of murals to affix to the fence at Ice Pool. So that's where it stands. I've kind of put that on the back burner, but still on the list. And Everett and I are planning to meet next Tuesday at ten o'clock in the park to talk about the next steps. I have a few ideas of things that might coordinate well with the asphalt removal and replacement project and that if we can work with Dante to decide what should be done at that time, then, you know, he can implement that if it works with him and his budget and needs. And if not with his budget, maybe we can find the money for those things. But I think that would be our next step is to try to complete things that coordinate with the pavement removal and replacement in the area where it's going to occur. And Everett, did you want to talk about the other issue?
Um, oh, well, we are looking into and gathering some information through, I think I mentioned the last meeting regarding Ice Park. And we're trying to do a little background information before we come back or go through with it. And certainly Carrie will be involved before any of that. But we want to at least be as prepared as possible with that. So it has to do with daylighting Ice Park and something like that. And there's some opportunities for funding with it. And, you know, I have just enough information to not have any details, so. Next, next meeting, I think we'll, we can have more on that. And then just on the, going back to the Public Arts Committee, I was interested in meeting. And I'd say Kathy really just was so well organized and had measurements and pictures and everything and just basically just turned, he handed it over to them. So they really appreciated that. And hopefully they'll move with that along before that. They're not sure, there's a question whether they want to paint the slats, whether there's also organizations that you can send a painting or a picture of it and then they'll turn the slats with the whole image in it. So they weren't really sure how they wanted to proceed with that. But they're certainly open to it, had questions about making sure that they didn't go through the trouble. And then, you know, the master plan kicks in and I assured them, I think we all assured them, master plan isn't anywhere close to income, so, yet. But other than that, yeah, so good work Kathy did.
I also thought that there was more interest in not spray painting the existing surface, which is what the original, you know, reduce for use recycle idea was. But there is some interest in involving schools or community in a series of murals or multiple murals that children could participate in or the community could participate in. And so all those details are things that they'd want to look at. You know, I don't, I don't think they've completely rolled out all the concepts, but, you know, I think that that committee as it's composed right now is more interested in something that's actually painted by hand with, that involves children of the community. And also I thought there was some mention of leaning toward promoting the pool with pool themed images, especially if it were up on Willow Street. But I, I think people were just kind of thinking about their vague ideas. And as time goes on and if they're on this, a subcommittee, I think they'll formulate, I think the best idea will come out of working with the group.
And, and as a, the person, the, what's the pool manager's name?
Ricardo.
Yeah, he was, he was in attendance and he would also, he also agreed to be on the subcommittee. So that would be real helpful, get, get his input on.
All right, and then if I may add, just a quick update on the Ice Park. So Kathy, thank you for the background information on the daylighting. I haven't had a chance to respond, but I did read through it that you sent to me.
At all, but I wanted to give you some more background than I saw on that originally.
Yeah, that's, that's great, thank you. And I did actually have a scoping meeting today with the engineering firm that we're looking to use for that study, the hydrology and the creek design. And I did have a lot of questions about, you know, what, what is it that you, you anticipate the, the natural, you know, the area around the creek and the, and the environment looking like? Along with some technical questions. But I did say, well, the good news is I have a planning commission meeting tonight, so I can ask our planning commissioners to specifically, are there, you know, when you envision the creek being daylit and with natural banks and things like that, are there projects in the area or that you know of that you kind of envision that environment being? There's a lot of different ways of doing it, but they, they thought it would be really helpful to kind of have that, a sense of what the commissioners, and you're, you know, if you don't, if you know something now off the bat, I'd love to hear it and pass it on to them. If not, if you could think about it and send me an email with any thoughts you might have. They said that that would be really helpful if they're putting together their scope and getting started on the project. So, you know, they said you can, you know, and in terms of the environment, you can do sort of more of a woodland kind of a feel at the creek bank. You can do something, and certainly they want to do something that's appropriate to the area as well. And so we'll be looking at that in terms of the, the landscape, but just kind of what that feel is. So we are getting started on that, those two studies.
There is, there is information and a lot of, we're working, I think at some point, to have a presentation on the individual. And what she was going to talk about is other projects, show examples of other projects that they've done. And some there were, seemed to be impossible, pretty challenging. But they're able to, to get through it. And I think that's kind of a helpful starting point to see what's possible. You know, what, and their history, their background, so it's not just some new that they're doing, it's some that they've done in communities.
So it's hard to really talk about this right now, but I'm, I'm just curious, how far along are you, Carrie, with the group that you're working with now? Is there, is there a contract signed or are they already?
This was to try to get together a scope of work for us to review. So nothing's actually started or been signed yet at this point.
Okay, so right now it looks like we've got two possible.
Right.
Decisions to begin, okay. And are you okay with that? I know you're already overloaded to have.
I think we should talk about it offline and I did, if I could talk with you, Kathy, maybe Thursday about it and review kind of the, the person you had sent to me. I have some questions on that.
And we have an appointment after Tuesday as well.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I think, you know, like if we could have a presentation of, you know, some different ideas, I think that might help us give some feedback. I mean, I don't, I can't think of any examples off the top of my head of places where I've seen kind of creeks re, I mean, I know there's a Santa Rosa Creek, you know, that they kind of put the, the greenway along Santa Rosa Creek downtown Santa Rosa. And that's an example, but that's about the only one I can think of. And personally, I, I guess I, my, my just initial two cents is that I would like to, to be somewhat, you know, make the creek somewhat accessible. Like I wouldn't want to see like a dense riparian woodland kind of passing through there that then you can't even see the creek or get near the creek. I think part of the opportunity at Ice Park and the thing that I've mentioned before always frustrates me is we have this nice kind of grassy area and one of the only kind of naturalized parts of the creek and we fenced it off and you can't get close to the creek. So I would like to have, you know, some opportunities to see some, you know, opportunity to get closer to this, you know, moving body of water as, and, you know, that runs year round. That's my, my two cents for what I would like to see. But I'd like to, yeah, maybe see some, some examples of before and after, you know, creek freeing projects.
And right now, our master plan talks about actually taking areas of the creek that are open and covering over them to give us more space. And that's kind of a trade off, but I think we should think about that because that, that would be a change. We didn't want to do that. I know, I like the space, but I can see both sides. So I think we should be thinking about that. And then Carrie, before anything, any real, you know, contracting things, sign and, sign and seal, doesn't the council, doesn't all this need to get approved by the council? So is that a long timeframe?
Um, no, if it's under a certain limit, which it should be, then the, then we, we don't need to, it doesn't need to go to council. It's already in the approved budget for this year. So the budget is allocated, so as long as it's within budget, which is below the, below the threshold, then it needs to go to council.
Okay, especially if it came with private funding, it would be a lot less.
Yeah, I'm sure that definitely is always of interest.
Okay, well, thank, thank you very much, Ally. Be in touch with you.
Great.
And do we have any other, Luke is on our climate action subcommittee, so he's not here.
Right, although the update, they do have a meeting tomorrow at three thirty. So they'll have a variety of things on their agenda. And I will mention that the, the open seats are still being advertised for that. There's the additional youth person and environmental justice person and one other person I can never remember. I apologize, I didn't write it down, but it's on the city's website.
And I guess I'll say, it sounds like, looks like the design review subcommittee is actually starting up soon, so.
Next Monday, yeah. Yep.
Yep. So maybe the next meeting I'll have something to report.
And then I have a report on the zero waste.
Yeah.
So Kathy and I spoke about this before. I'd offered to step in as representative from the commission for zero waste. So I'm going to do that. And I went to a first meeting, trying to catch up, lot, lot to listen to. But the biggest item they're working on is what's called SB thirteen eighty-three, which is coming up in twenty twenty-two. And it just has to do with cities having plans for composting and recapturing food. And it's just, it's a whole list of items that the committee is looking to get ahead of. And that's kind of the main thrust right now. There are two council members on the committee as well as the city manager. So I think those are things that are going to be in the forefront for that. And I think I spoke with Carrie, I think you, I gave you a copy of the email as well, Paul, regarding the appointment. I don't know that Carrie said, I think we need to agendize it or for the next meeting. Is that right?
Yeah, since it's an actual action to vote on that appointment, we'll put that on the next agenda, which will still be before the next zero waste committee meeting. So that Everett can be officially appointed.
Then I can vote. But I'll have, yeah, I'll have a lot more information next time. But it's, it's a good group, it's quite busy and ambitious, a lot of stuff going on. So it's, I got a lot to learn.
Great, thank you. And there's no other subcommittees to report on. We can have the planning director's report.
All right, there is a lot going on in the city right now. So I'll talk about last week's city council meeting and then the upcoming city council meetings, which there's a few of. The, so at last Tuesday's meeting, the council approved the housing element RFP. So that is out on the street and due the end of this month. We can get going on that. Obviously, that'll be a big work plan effort for the planning commission the next year as they get started. We also had the peace, peaceful nominees were approved and their ceremony will be later this summer. Actually, I think it may be closer to September, just trying to make sure that we're a little bit more clear in terms of the tiers and the openness and with COVID restrictions. The council also held a public hearing and approved a fireworks ban, given the state of wildfires in the area. The, they also had the presentation and first reading for the development impact fee update that they commissioned and heard in January. They, and I do want to say they appreciated the planning commission's recommendations, both on the smaller units and how to deal with those in terms of discounting the fees as well as, it comes from a rest later, in particular, talked about the green design and, you know, being able to reward. And he was maybe even thinking about further options for rewarding sustainable design when we, in terms of the stormwater component and see that, that's being proposed. But they did do the first reading. They'll have the second reading and adoption for both that and the fireworks ban at their meeting next Tuesday. Also next Tuesday, there'll be a certificate of appreciation presented to Kate Howard for her service on the planning commission. We'll also have an online permitting contract for that consultant. It's been a somewhat lengthy investigation in the selection process, making sure we get the right consultant for the city. And let's see, and then a couple of other city council meetings or city related meetings tomorrow afternoon is the relaunching Sebastopol Community Summit. You may have seen the signs around town, on the library, at Petaluma and a few other, Petaluma and Sebastopol Avenue and a few other locations, the Mason's Building. So please join us if you can for that, that's tomorrow afternoon. And then next Wednesday morning, so May eighteenth is the next city council meeting. And then May nineteenth at nine thirty, the council will be having their goals, their goals and priorities session. So quite a few meetings on the bucket. And quite a few items related to this, to this group. And I think that's it for my formal report, but I'm happy to answer any questions about goings on if I can.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? All right, Kathy?
Any word on the hotel?
Actually, I did talk with the hotel folks. It actually came up in the development impact fee meeting. And they are not going to be doing construction this year, but they, things, they did say that things were starting to look good. So they will either be pulling their permit this fall and likely starting in the spring or pulling it in the spring, depending on whether or not the, we did a blanket extension of approvals last year in relation to COVID and the fact that a lot of people's worlds were turned upside down. I have not yet talked to city management, whether or not we, they want, we want to extend that for an additional year. If not, they would need to pull their building permit by October to secure their entitlement. And that would, you know, and then they would be able to begin construction. But either way, it sounds like they're looking at beginning construction early next spring. And in the meantime, they have the Ned Con Sculpture Garden, which is a fun visual to look at. And in the meantime, they have the Ned Con Sculpture Garden, which is uh, a fun visual to look at, and I believe they're actually looking at a couple other potential, at least, not necessarily for the, where the Ned Con is, but uses for community events for their park, where the parking lot will be across Brown Street.
Thanks. Anyone else have any questions?
Uh, just a comment, uh, along with the summit tomorrow, um, from noon to 1:30, I will be conducting a workshop on working from home. Successful, um, so um, it is a um, a workshop, you have to register for you, it's pretty much just the name and and email address through the Small Business Development Center, but you can go to the commission site, um, to the Napa Sonoma SBDC site, I think you might even have it, or contact me and I can get you the link.
Great, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Final comment? Question of Carrie? All right, seeing none, we will adjourn this meeting until May 25th, and we have another Fort Eaton Housing on the 25th, right?
Correct, yes, and a couple other agenda items, but yeah.
All right, very good. We'll see you all then, if not before.